At least not about the stadium.
All right, it is five o'clock. If everyone will please stand. We'll get started. We all begin our meeting with a word of prayer. I've been couples lead us to that. Dr. Kim Scott will follow with pledge of allegiance and flag is to my land.
Most great.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life and thank you for yet another beautiful day and all the blessings. Father, we're thanking for our beauty to gather here and serve in this capacity. Just ask for your wisdom as we do so. Everything done here tonight may be done in accordance to your will. Father, we just pray that you continue to be with our school system, with our county, with all the leadership and Father, we just pray that our schools are enlightened, that the community observes on your behalf. Father, just forgive us for we fail you. Thank you most of all. Your solemn and prayer always more holy than anything.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This title, I see Mr. Killers, please call the board.
Shane Carter?
Here.
Ben Cuddles?
Here.
Brandon Cherry? Megan Hutchison?
Here.
Nora Spring?
There.
Dr. Kim Scott?
Here.
All present.
All right, there is a quorum present, so we will proceed with the meeting called officially the board. The first item is a recommendation to accept the board agenda for tonight.
I make a motion to accept the board agenda.
Second.
Our motion is made in second. Is there any discussion about the agenda for tonight? If there's no discussion on its favor of approving it as is, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, we do have, uh, next out is approval of the consent agenda. We need a motion to do that.
Second.
Our motion is made in second. If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, all in favor of its approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Uh, next we have, uh, we do have a delegation tonight and, uh, I'm gonna call Kayla if you want to come up. See you online as well. Kayla Patterson is here and she's requested to address the board tonight. Uh, serving as student dress code at Chester County Junior High. And so, uh, first of all, welcome Kayla.
Thank you. Thank you.
Give you some uninterrupted time and then the board will have a chance to propose any questions to you.
Sounds great. Good evening, members of the board, staff, and families. My name is Kayla Patterson, a proud graduate of Chester County High School, class of twenty ten. A parent of two students in the district. Thank you for taking the time to listen tonight. I'm here to speak on behalf of many families who've shared the same concern that our current sixth or twelfth grade dress code, especially the pants policy, has become too difficult and too expensive for parents and students to keep up with. Over the past few years, finding pants that need to approve dress code has turned into a real challenge. Most stores no longer carry twill or cotton pants that fit properly. And when they do, they're often much more expensive than regular school clothes. Since twenty twenty, the cost of school-approved clothing has ridden, has risen tremendously. And for families with multiple children, this creates a real financial burden that adds unnecessary stress. Students, especially females, have voiced concerns about being singled out and feeling judged because of their body type. Their pants are often either too stretchy or flare out at the bottom, which makes it difficult to meet the current dress code expectations. What may seem like a small clothing rule can have a big effect on confidence and self-esteem. And no student should feel uncomfortable or embarrassed over the fit of their clothes. We want to also emphasize that the strict dress codes do not prevent bullying. If anything, they can sometimes make it worse. When students are called out or embarrassed in front of others for what they wear, it sends the wrong message about acceptance and respect. True safety and unity in schools come from support, understanding, and fairness, not from the type of fabric a student is wearing. And finally, we're kindly asking the board to adopt the K through five grade dress code policy for pants, which allows clothing that is simple, appropriate, inexpensive, and readily available. This would make shopping easier for families and give students clothing that fits properly, while still maintaining a neat and respectful appearance. To show how many families care about this issue, we created a petition on change.org to revise the Chester County School Dress Code. And I'm proud to say that over three hundred parents, students, and community members have already signed and supported this change. That number continues to grow each day, showing how much this issue truly matters to our community. Thank you for your time, your understanding, and for caring about the students and families of Chester County. Thank you.
All right, just hang out there for a little. Obviously, first to be transparent, we can't take action tonight. You can just hear your, hear your, uh, requests. And the board can respond with questions to something that we forward that would be on the agenda at a future meeting. Do we can have a conversation?
Yes, absolutely.
Do any board members have a question to respond or response to what Kayla shared with us tonight?
Is there a specific, um, bell-bottom issue, pants issue? You mentioned the type of materials.
Yes, sir. A lot of the women, especially females, um, there is a lot of stretchiness at the waistline in which the school board requires it to fit at the waistline. And anytime it's stretchy, it's considered spandex. But for my, for my daughter, it has been very difficult to find pants that actually fit her well. Um, I'm a thicker girl, so is my daughter, um, and we ended up having to go to Old Navy, American Eagle, shop them on, and still couldn't even find a pair of pants with the cotton and twill without the spandex in there. Um, and we eventually had to go over to the men's section to find, to find those. Um, but they still don't fit her well.
Well, I don't know anything about women's clothing, but I do know I have a really skinny young man that went junior high now in high school, one grown, and it is equally as hard to find a really, really small waist with a really, really long leg.
Yes, sir.
In the same scenario.
Yes, sir.
But you do understand, we got to have some type of gal.
Absolutely.
And it's very hard to allow specific, ten different specific pants for a female.
Absolutely.
Not allowing for the others.
Yes, sir.
So there has to be common ground somewhere.
I'm just more asking about the spandex wear instead of having it just for one particular type. Um, yeah, I know the K through fifth grade, I know they can wear blue jeans and stuff. Is there a problem with wearing blue jeans that have no cuts or anything in there to y'all?
I would, I would, I don't know if all of our, we all have to do it every day.
I, yes.
Policy and enforcement at the school though, so.
We, we rely on our administrators.
Administrators, so. Uh, well, I, in the policy, we do have a, a, uh, and I, and I'm not, I don't know the fabrics as well as maybe you may and, and, and the lady's may, but there's a cotton polyester. Is that similar to a spandex?
It's, it's not. Well, the thing is, like, my child got dress coded for, I'm just gonna give a reference. Sure. My child got, uh, dress coded for having flares that were not being cut and they're considered yoga pants, but they had pockets. She was not showing anything. And a lot of the females, uh, a lot of the students I've heard from feel like they get singled out because they are either bigger or, um, their pants, their pants do not fit properly. Um, but I, I'm just more asking about if we can allow spandex in with our pants and, um, I'm trying to think. I'm sorry.
Don't get hurt.
Um, it just would allow a lot easier to shop for. Um, I'm just gonna give a reference. I bought four pairs of American Eagle jeans because I could not find any. They were over two hundred dollars. And for four pairs of pants, for her to only wear for this year baby, that's, that's a lot. That's a lot. Especially when we can't find anything at Walmart, at Old Navy, anywhere like that. It has just been very difficult to find school-approved pants like that or in khaki, any solid color. Um, I just wish there was more spandex to it. Um, and it, I, I wish it was worded different in the policy book, um, that would allow stuff like that.
Any other questions or? The petitions were mainly for female or was there male students?
There was, there was mostly females, mostly females. Um, the men, it's not that hard to really find khaki pants or any type of pants that fit at the waist. Um, I know whenever we went to Walmart, I looked over all in the women's section, couldn't find anything. Went over into the men's section, there's a whole thing of them. But every one of that we tried on, the waist did not fit properly. Um, and it was just, it's a struggle to try to find that, to try to find certain pants that they feel comfortable in their self-esteem. It's complicated also.
Could you come up with something more concrete to give to the board?
Yes.
Uh, you know, what kind of clothing that you're talking about, something in black and white?
Can I show you pictures? Uh, okay. Um, I will show you. Um, I'm just going to reference what my daughter got, um, got dress coded for. Um, I'm sorry. I know, I'm trying to hurry up. Um, something like, let's see here. Something like this. That's, that's easily, like, can loosen up.
She was dress coded for pants?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. And the, well, these, I'm just kinda giving a reference, but these actually have pockets in back pockets, and she got dress coded for it.
You show us.
Yes.
What was the reasoning?
Uh, because they were too stretchy at the waistband and they are considered flares and not good cuts. Which honestly, the cut and flare are not, they're pretty similar.
They're very similar and there's not a distinction on the leg open in the main, so that's.
That's what?
It go.
Well, it says bell-bottom change for me.
Well, bell-bottom's less, that's lighter.
No, it's not.
But that's. Or in my opinion, it's not. Bell-bottom would be.
Would be big.
Leg open.
Yes.
Flare would be up.
I think the figure is that we'll have a whole bunch of kids coming to school with a big leg.
Yes, and that's, that's what I don't want to have specifically with leggings, but I feel like if they have pockets and pockets in the back, I feel like that's acceptable. Um, especially, it, it's hard to, it, it's hard for females to find stuff that actually fits comfortably around. And majority of the stuff now, like the pants, are spandex. They're, they don't have a button to them. They're just normally spandex. Um, but I don't want to specifically get on with leggings or anything, but except that these pants can have stretch to them and have spandex towards them. Uh, that way it's easier for students to be accessible and readily, because that's what it says in the state handbook, um, from the Board of Education, that it should be, um, it should be easily read, or easily, pardon.
Readly available.
Readly available. Yes, ma'am. Uh, readily available and, um, inexpensive and appropriate and simple. And honestly, it has not been simple to find any pants that fit her and the experience has been outrageous, honestly. But that's, that's more of what I'm wanting to get to is kinda have a little bit more leniency towards the girls except for them wearing leggings and stuff that ob- obviously show their bottom. Um, but I feel like if, if they're not causing a concern for, you know, standing out and stuff, then I think it should be appropriate. And also another mention is I have also heard from other students that there has been students that have been wearing cat ears and cattails in the school. And I do not think that is appropriate at all.
At the junior high?
At the junior high. I've heard this from students and I understand it can be a delicate situation, but coming from Chester County, we're Christians in belief, we, you know.
I can speak to something that came up as a rumor several years ago, recently, when they were talking about, you know, litter boxes in the bathrooms. People said that was just happening in the bathrooms and Mr. Murley went through every bathroom just to confirm what we already knew, but just had to have eyes on the scene to make sure that that was not happening.
Yes, sir.
For she got both administrators here now.
They're doing an awesome job. They're doing an awesome job.
But I was gonna say, they can respond to that because right now the board members think that that's, you know.
It's kinda crazy. Has, has that happened?
I haven't had the report.
It's, it has, it has been reported, but it did fit drinks.
Okay, it has been.
Second mass for a movie.
Okay, okay.
Now, I'm not gonna say, you know, that they, some kids get creative and so we're not, you know, oh, I have one parent or sometimes we have two, but anytime it's brought to our attention, it's been corrected.
Okay, okay. Well, that's, that was my point. I just didn't think, I think that everybody should abide by the school rules and, um, females especially shouldn't get singled out for what they wear and how their body fits to their pants.
Any other responses or questions? Kayla, thank you for.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you.
And just, is there, I would, I would guess a question. Is there anything as far as administrative that's maybe changed this year from previous years or that may be causing more attention on, on the issue that?
A smidge.
Does that, does that make sense?
It's just, we're taking the handbook and we're enforcing something that may not have been enforced as much in the past. Um, but my, I mean, that's all we're doing. We haven't changed anything.
Right, but you're just enforcing what's already been there.
Yes.
Any questions for, for Mr. Chair? All right, we'll, uh, do some further research on that and if, uh, can move forward, we'll certainly let, let you know. Again, thank you for your time and why you addressed the board tonight.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Uh, next is our spotlight and our celebration, and, uh, we have a couple of things tonight, but obviously we are East Chester, so when we are outside at the school, uh, we, we like to hear the good things going on. So, Ms. Grassfield, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm excited to have you. Um, of course, I've got Ms. Robyn here. She's got, uh, a video that she's gonna show in just a minute. I'll let her, um, tell thought process behind that. Also got Ms. Crystal Hunt, um, which I noticed her to you all earlier, but she's our assistant principal this year, so I'd like to welcome her. She's been a big help. It's been, uh, wild. Starting the year is a little bit wilder than I realized, so. It's been a little wild, but, but we're, we're starting to level out a little bit, so it's been good. Um, but I wanna show you a couple of things we've had going on, and this, I wanna say thank you to all of you. I am so excited. Uh, before you leave tonight, please, please, please walk through the gym and check out our new bleachers. Um, they were installed over fall break last week and they look so good. So this picture in the middle is from, uh, our Christmas party last year, uh, showing you the what's across the sea that was there, that were very shaky and awfully scary to walk up. Uh, but these are, um, what we have now, and so we're super excited. Um, they're electric, and so they got that hooked up, all powers hooked up, and I don't know how to work it, and it's, it's amazing. So it looks really good. So please stop in there to, to check it out. Um, and then also I wanted to say that, um, Ms. Brittany Lewis and Officer Kyle got together and spoke with several of our first responders in our, our county and even some in Jackson. And we had, um, the Friday before fall break, we had our EMS, we had, um, Chester County, the, the county fire department, the city cap fire department, um, we had police department, we had THP. We even had an aviation, uh, bring in their helicopter from Jackson. And so they spent time talking with all the kids and, um, showing them all of their equipment and, and sirens and we watched the helicopter fly off and it was, it was just amazing. And so, uh, one of the things that, because you all approved our fundraisers for this year, one of the ways that we wanted to give back to the community was to, um, thank our, our first responders. And so we had different people throughout the, the school made posters, thank you posters, and all the kids and staff signed those. And we were able to present those to them, um, at the end of our date on Friday and then got to watch the helicopter leave, so the kids were super excited about that. But, um, I love that we're able to pull in our, our members from the community to, um, see the kids. And, and the pilot for, on the helicopter, he said that he actually decided to drive, to be on a helicopter, be a pilot, because when he was in third grade, the helicopter came and, and that's where he, he got from. So I'm hoping that some of this will spark some interest for some of these kids, but they were super excited and they loved it. And then our theme this year for our school is we are family. Uh, East Chester is, we, we try to live by that, you know, every day and we've got, we send messages out. We do per request. We, um, we really try to treat everybody like family. Um, we walk through the halls. If I don't get five hundred cuts a day, then something is wrong and I'm going home sad. So, um, we really are, are really pushing that and we want our kids to know that no matter what's going on at home, this is their safe place and we are their family and we love them. And so Ms. Robyn has made a video. Like, can you, how to carry this stuff?
Um, this video, I love making creative things, but talking about my family is one of my pride and joys. So I take a lot of pride in this. Um, on the table are about our two disco balls. Um, the reason we have those is we have those all throughout our school with different classrooms because we strive as a family to be like a disco ball. If I took just a piece of glass from that disco ball, it's not gonna shine very much light. But it's when you come together as a family, as one purpose, one reason, that's when the light truly shines. So I hope that shines through this video today.
(Music) 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 (Music)
And Ms. Robyn came up with that song. She is the best. Well, thank you all for everything that you do. I love when y'all come, um, it's, every time I see any of you anywhere, you're, you're willing to come up and talk and it's like we are all a community and I just love that board members are no different. You know, you come in and you really represent our school, our system, our kids, and you are, really have a heart for, for our students. So, thank you for, thank you. On November fifteenth, if you would like to join us, please come. We would love to have you.
Did you happen to find a piece of gum from the Christmas program in nineteen seventy-six?
Probably so. We're saving it for you.
Kindergarten seventy-six? All right, thank you guys. That was very good. All right, uh, we do move into our, uh, couple of actionable items that we, oh, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. We do have one more celebration that was added and, uh, I'm gonna skip that, but it's very, very important. It's a good recognition, recognition for our school system and how Mr. Killers are kinda drawing more attention to them.
Again, it's already been announced, uh, to the community of educators and support staff that we have two representatives for the principal of the year and supervisor of the year, Ms. Amy Woolley, which is, we knew at, uh, announced earlier she was one of the top twenty-seven. Now she's one of the top eight. So she gets a trip to Nashville to be recognized officially. And then also Melanie Field gets recognized as one of the top nine in the state. Two, also getting another. Two, also getting another, uh, state recognition in Nashville, so we're excited. That's the first time Chester's had two different roles being announced, and, and, uh, we're very proud of their work and the work that everybody does, but, uh, definitely we're, uh, proud of this work of these ladies, as I shared with the principals and support staff this morning. Uh, it's a lot of work that goes into the application process, the energy process. It's not something that you just put your name and app and then hope you get selected. There's a lot of effort and vetting in the process, but both of these ladies have done exceptionally well through that process and getting the right recognition.
Congratulations, Ms. Amy and, uh, Ms. Melanie Field. Uh, we do have our couple of items of business tonight. I don't believe anyone has signed up for public.
After I read it, I was like, wonderful.
We, we just didn't want to leave anybody out. Well, we brought into these, uh, a couple of items. Uh, first is a recommendation of a revision of the board policy, uh, to increase the, uh, we talked about this that last month, and then when we sent it to the, uh, TSBA, we were advised about maybe a, uh, a, a revision to the policy about the number of earned credits for high schools. Mr. Pills, you can kind of give us a clear definition of that.
Well, as you remember from the last month's meeting in West Chester, there's a lot of, we had a lot of discussion around this policy about the, the questions or the doubts that this is gonna cause too much burden on the students because we're adding the number of credits to be earned. And the satisfaction was being raised by, by the conversation that, that it's an incremental increase each year, and there's plenty of opportunities when you have seven periods in a given year to be able to get all those credits accomplished in one year. I think you're on the thirty-six credit plan right now, Jase?
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, somewhere around that, so, but again, like what Shane had shared, when, when I went back to the TSBA representative Jennifer White, she said, well, as you see in the, in the conversation that she included with me, that even though several districts have done similar to work that we did, it is still important to keep the state minimum requirement of twenty-two credits included, just in case you have somebody that transfers in from another county that may be adding twenty-two coming in their senior year, which those things can happen, or out of state. And, uh, we don't want to cause an undue burden on a student coming in later on when they may not have enough time in their credit year to be able to accomplish the, the credit required for graduation. So, as you look at the reflection from the policy revision that Jennifer provided us, it doesn't change the content of what we decided last month, or you decided last month, but it just adds that caveat that the twenty-two minimum requirement is still part of the, of the plan altogether for graduation requirements.
And there is a revision that you had to review, uh, or could review, uh, to satisfy that twenty-two credit minimum. Is there a motion, uh, to approve the revision of policy four point six oh five? A month motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion or questions about, uh, about that?
It says receive a local Chester county diploma. Will it be, will there be a distinction between?
No.
Okay, so we're not adding any?
We're, yeah, no, we're not, we're not making any, it's not some separate thing. It's a state. Cause we don't have, we don't generate our own diplomas.
Right.
We just submit those, those numbers and names to, well, actually the numbers, because we populate the names on our own, uh, diplomas that we receive.
So, will it now be twenty-four or twenty-three?
It will still be the same thing, like what she's got in the highlighted, uh, or the different fonted text. It's still gonna be reflective of what we decided last month, but as you see, that you have like under, uh, the first bullet, before, uh, every student should ever see, it was specified twenty-two units of credit to receive regular diploma. But then in the future, the additional local, as they say, the local Chester county diploma will have the additional, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five in those three years. But it's not, it's not a different one. It's just, the state minimum is twenty-two. And that was the language that she provided me that I shared with you.
So, in three years, four years, or twenty-five credits, what if a student only gets twenty-two? They still graduate?
They can still graduate.
So, what, 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 what good is it raising it to twenty-five?
Well, again, the rationale going back to what was last month is we've got students that are not, uh, participating in dual enrollment or those additional credit hours that benefits their future career planning. It was a request made by the high school administration because you had several students who were entering their second semester of their senior year and not having an equivalent amount of credits to justify them being there, taking advantage of free, uh, learning opportunities that they have. If you remember from years previous, we had like seventy-five plus students who were on a shortened schedule during their second semester. They were not graduating, but they just were able to satisfy the majority of their credits by the fall. And then the second semester was just taking what they needed to. But we wanted to keep them in the game because, again, they were taking advantage of work-based learning, dual enrollment opportunities.
I think, to clarify, uh, I think the question is, Johnny enters ninth grade next year. He has twenty-two credits as a senior. He's from Chester County. He started ninth grade in Chester County. Is he still graduating?
I understand what you're saying.
He would.
Has twenty-two?
He's had twenty-two credits.
I don't know if it's a distinction. I mean, it's not like it's, it's not like it's...
I guess I like your question. Why, why is the point of last month's decision, if any student, it doesn't require that they take anything additional if they know they can still graduate with twenty-two?
Right.
Is that what it was?
It's all the same.
Exactly.
Some call three.
Now that we know that it's recommended, we did not change it, given from the state, then it's almost a blur. That's just my thoughts.
Well, and then again, I, I, I can't, I don't have a good comeback or a good response to that. Well, if, if the state minimum is twenty-two and somebody transfers in from another state or another county, and you want to have some incentive, if you increase it by just one semester credit, I mean, that would incentivize a little bit. It wouldn't make matters of person to move in here, but you, you can still incentivize the ones that are local Chester county instance. If you want to do it that way, then like Norris, everybody's saying, three-year period, you're gonna put the minimum twenty-two. There's no point trying to incentivize any of that. Well, and again, now that I, to be honest with you, ladies and gentlemen, I didn't think about that. I appreciate y'all bringing it up. The fact of it is, is there are several, the school counselors and administration, administrators are responsible for tracking those guys and girls who graduate for certain, um, additional credentials, like a ready graduate for a, um, I'm trying to think what I'm, uh, what we, work-based learning certification. So, there's additional certification, so it may be that if somebody goes through the premise, we have some type of Chester county seal put on that that recognizes, won't change anything. So, if somebody did go through, say in three years, like Norris was asking, and obtained the twenty-five, it would have an additional seal as a Chester county graduate. Just give them some type of recognition. It would be some additional recognition beyond the state minimum, yes. It would require, but again, going back to the way I read it originally was, this grabs those guys and girls who come in from out of county or out of state with less than what they need to be able to manage our numbers, but still graduate on time if they're in their last year.
But if it's the state bill, it's really no way to keep someone graduating during the fall.
That's right. It, it wouldn't be something appropriate to try to fight that. Not to say that they would carry it in court, but the policy supports the fact, whether our policy reflects it or not, our policy can't be contrary to what state law allows. That was, I think that was Jennifer's position to take when she shared that.
So, basically, we are completely disregarding Murphy's, uh, petition, and a little bit of recognition to get on top, whether it be a seal or anything, won't help anyone, whether it be to, again, to college, uh, because, I'm be honest, I don't think anyone's gonna put that on their college resume that they got an extra credit or two, to get a Chester county seal. Most people want to know where Chester county is on that. So, I mean, you are completely disregarding what no one wants to change. And also, just, so, see what changes I do. I guess two months now, when I decide, because it's the second month.
Well, it wouldn't have been, it's not changing anything this year, anyway.
Yeah, it's not changing.
So, it wasn't gonna change anybody here at this whole school year. It was still set at twenty-two. But I understand what you're saying. Of course, again, what changes things, as you know, the more credits that you take that are in the higher end or dual enrollment or AP courses, the better chance you are of getting a higher score in your ACT, which will give you benefit at the college level. If you're taking dual enrollment and they do transfer to other schools during your senior year, then those will count towards your benefit, so.
Well, there are other graduation requirements, and I'm just not, I, I just feel like that there's some information maybe we're missing as to why they're wanting. I understood why they wanted to do it, but now that we know, you know, you can't deny a student with twenty-two credits, I just don't see the point of even implementing those. And, you know, s- if they do finish their twenty-two credits when they're a junior, I mean, they're still gonna have to be enrolled in school. They're still gonna have to take classes, so, I mean, why aren't, wouldn't we? I, I'm just, I just don't see the point of something like what I was saying.
Well, the state law does allow them to graduate early. You can move on when grades...
Right, and there, and we would approve those.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, there's the ones that are gonna have their, um, credits in that will not physically be in school for the last semester of your senior year. It's like the come and go with work-based learning and dual enrollment, and they're still gonna have those opportunities, and they're still gonna do that, no matter whether they have twenty-two credits or twenty-five credits. Are you guys following me?
Yes.
I, I, I think, and I'm like, I, I, I don't know. There's maybe some information that we're not getting. Is, is it keeping up with the student? Is that what it is?
What you say keeping up with?
If we do the twenty-five, then they have to come to school. If they don't, then they get out and they can go to work. They can do whatever they want to. It, does the high school have to keep up with those kids or know what they're? I just, I'm just, I'm like, I, I just wonder if there's some more information that we're not getting.
From who?
From the high school.
Oh, I, I sure, that's what I'm...
Are they, are they saying there are too many students that are, are doing this now? I mean, because we were, this was a good thing three years ago, and now, I mean, I don't understand why, but all of a sudden... I thought we heard that some other schools have similar twenty-five years.
But my sup- my assumption was that they were encouraging them to take advantage of opportunities, and that, which I totally have been for that, but you can't require them, the state doesn't require them.
Yeah, they try.
But, uh, I'm all about. I would love for the students to stay and take advantage of all these extra opportunities in that extra semester, but there's really no way as board we can legislate that. We just have to encourage that by letting them know what the opportunities are.
If you, if you give me, I'm, I'm going back to last month's agenda, cause Coach Murley did provide us that information.
Yes.
He said Chester County High School operates on a seven-period schedule, allowing students to earn an average of seven credits per academic year. I shared with you guys that there's no study hall anymore, so you, you have to be enrolled in seven credit-bearing courses. Uh, consequently, many students can complete the majority of their graduation requirements by the conclusion of their junior year. This has led to an increasing number of students opting out of valuable educational opportunities during their senior year, including work-based learning, dual enrollment, and capstone courses aligned with their area of folk, areas of focus. In some cases, students attempt to arrange their schedules in a manner that minimizes or eliminates their attendance during the spring of their senior year. By incrementary, inc- excuse me, incrementally increasing the total number of credits required for graduation, the school seeks to encourage greater engagement in advanced academic and career-focused opportunities, ensuring that students make full use of their senior year to further prepare them for post-secondary success. That's the language that he gave last month.
So, they are discouraging some of these students from giving them the come and go option, the last semester or something?
I know some districts, cause this has been discussed among directors, some districts require a, like a dual enrollment, like for us, we allow a dual enrollment semester course, college level, like say, English Language Arts, English Comp One, to satisfy the whole year when it meets only the first semesters. Some schools instead require Comp One, Comp Two to satisfy that. So, that's, I don't know if that's the way that everybody else justifies it, but that's what I know that some districts do share. Of course, some are on a block schedule anyway, so it kind of accommodates that, because the block schedule, every course ends at the semester end anyway.
So, can we revise this to align with the state?
Again, the policy that was decided last month is what's in our handbook right now, or what's in our policy manual right now. What I'm saying is if somebody comes in and says, there is no way that I can get the twenty-five required, if we're talking about three years away, they have legal grounds to be able to say, I should still qualify, if they have the right twenty-two. I mean, it's not like you can take any twenty-two. You've gotta get like fourteen or fifteen, like of your basic humanities, and then certain focus of study, but, uh, to equival- to be equivalent to the twenty-two credits, but that's a state minimum. That's what Jennifer was trying to explain to me through that email that I shared with you folks.
Correct me if I'm oversimplifying, but if we approve this, it basically puts it right back where it was.
Yeah.
With a little bit more verbiage around the, yeah.
Well, we just have to use, you know, encouragement to keep those guys, to take advantage.
Correct.
So, you know, I don't think it keeps us from acting on this revision, but it kind of goes back to where it was before we started last month. Is that, is that fair to say you all understand it like I do?
I think the encouragement is gonna rely on, play the high school administrators to encourage these students to do so. Versus what the state says, if they get twenty-two credits, then they graduate, I mean. I would hate to not encourage people moving into Chester County because their senior may not graduate high school because they can't reach the twenty-five credits needed to do so. Now, I mean, there are a lot of kids that may not want to go to college too. Since a higher mark, but I, I would, like Clay has asked, I wish that more kids would take advantage of what our schools offer, because it's really good. It can help them decide a, a future, but at the same time, some of them, they're just ready to get out of school and go to work. So, if the state says they gotta have twenty-two credits if they're the right credits, then I don't think we should hold those students back either.
And I don't think we have legal grounds where you could hold them back. Again, going back to when, I'd say, eight years ago, we were on a trimester schedule, on a sixty-day schedule, uh, we already, we had twenty-five, and state law was still twenty-two. So, we were at a twenty-five mark then. We came back down to a twenty-two when we transferred back from a trimester schedule back to us, the, uh, full-year courses that we have right now.
So, like then, our policy then, by just doing this revision, will still encourage that number of credits, but it allows for twenty-two. So, that's, and again, what, it's kind of changed the language, really, disregarding what Mr. Murphy asked, because I totally support getting these kids to take advantage, but we can't do anything that state law doesn't allow us to do. So, I, you know, the, the recommendation would be to approve this provision and continue with the language in our policy that's already there we approved last month, but it also has that caveat that we cannot prevent someone from graduating. Does that make sense here, Rob?
I will say that, then, per what the actual words in the, uh, what the policy is, it says required, which we will have to change because it is not required. It'll have to be established... It'll have to be established that it is not required.
It's encouraged. Encouraged, yeah.
And, uh, that's, uh, for the high school especially, that's where the counselors, uh, come in a lot of times, because I know they are in charge of saying of all the dorm room. Uh, Clay and Angela and, I think they know about it, but it's the counselors that actually do all of the, uh, talking with Fred Harmon and talking to JSCC about everything to get the dorm room to go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I re-say in my motion?
Oh, I did the motion.
Yes.
No, we have to vote on the motion, I mean, you, we just have to vote on the motion. Uh, if the vote was not passed, then we can do a new motion, for the motions to approve it, right?
Motion is to approve it.
So, the approval is not, is okay. We just need to change the language.
Where's the twenty-five step here?
Because it, this does not take out what was approved last month. It adds the twenty-two allowable state policy to be added back.
I think what Norris, because this one says "required," that do, do, if we don't want to do it.
You go, you go two different ways with that. You could, if you did go suggested, you could go that path. Uh, but then you would just, you, you could either leave the required again, like at the first bullet where it says to receive a local Chester County, uh, diploma, uh, that this, the stipulation, just like you raised initially, brand new, this Chester County diploma, that's what is the tagging with the required. If you go back to saying suggested, that's just saying you can do the state minimum of twenty-two. The class of twenty-seven, twenty-three credits are suggested, if you did it the way Jason may mention. But you would, you would do, you'd either do something with the required under those three bullets for the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine year, or you change the language of the local Chester County diploma.
So, yeah, I was gonna, I'm just trying to think through the required. What, how is that, I mean, required to receive the Chester County whatever, that's all that means?
Yes.
Doesn't mean it's required to graduate, it means required to achieve recognition.
But, what?
There is no, there's no twist of the arm for that, you're right, Dr. P. It's just, it's.
I say that we just end with, before high school graduation, every student shall res- shall achieve the specif- specify, excuse me, twenty-two units of credit to receive a regular diploma, period.
I, I absolutely.
And just forget all the other, I mean, they can encourage all they want to, but I mean.
Okay, well, in that case, what, what I first said is, is in effect. We need to vote, uh, this one up or down, uh, whatever you feel on that. And then, secondly, um, we would have a new motion to achieve what you just suggested. So, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, which is a revision of the policy and contains the required language in the existing policy, say aye. Any opposed? All right, so that motion fails. Now, we need a new motion to achieve what, you need to state what you just said, Becky, a motion, yeah.
I make a motion that we change this policy, we revise it to say, before high school graduation, every student shall achieve the specified twenty-two units of credit to receive a regular diploma, period.
Now, is that to basically go back to what the policy was before last month?
That's what I was trying to pull up.
We could just, the motion would be to, to, uh, go back to the policy prior to the last month.
It would be the, it would be the policy that was last updated July the thirteenth of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
Uh, I will send that to you, but it's going back to as it was prior to last month's meeting. It was the initial policy that reads, of course, we can go back to it, or you got us.
So, the motion is to return to the policy that was in effect prior to the September meeting. Is that accurately stated, your motion? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All of, is there any more discussion? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. So, maybe a minute. Let's see, let me just.
It's like, I think some of the glass fell off his disco ball.
Okay. Uh, well, we are, uh, the next item is, uh, regarding the student discipline handbook. This is a revision, that's, uh, a recommendation to approve. Uh, Dr. Hall is here, the middle school principal, he's requested this revision to current Rule Seventeen, and instead of me trying to explain it, uh, I'm gonna have you sort of dig into that. Dr. Hall is here, if we need additional, you'll input.
So, going back to the conversation I had with Dr. Hall not too many weeks ago, he was looking at his current discipline policy, Rule Seventeen, dealing with circumstances where just saying something inappropriate that needs to have some type of discipline measure, the first step of that process included out-of-school suspension for up to three days. He felt that that was heavy based on, that it was just a verbal, uh, statement. Inappropriate as it was, but still required some distinction. So, again, he proposed, based on your example, what you have highlighted in blue is what the current discipline code reads for the middle school, Rule Seventeen. As you can see, the first offense is three days out-of-school suspension, which, as he shared, you know, kids need to stay in school if they can. So, what he proposed was this separation where you have verbal, separate from physical, separate from a fighting assault or battery of students. So, distinguish those three rules into three subsections with appropriate discipline accordingly. Going back to the junior high and the high school, which have a similar rule, theirs is just Rule Eighteen. The high school and the junior high principals both supported the, the, uh, revision suggested.
So, this would be in effect, middle school up?
This would be middle school up, and, and again, based on the board's decision, this is gonna be, of course, we've already published hard copies of these, but this will change on the electronic copies of all our handbooks. So, it'll be publicizing our webpages.
Would it be up to the administrators to decide whether it's just foul language or a threat?
Yeah, so, so if you look, Megan?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I would, I didn't, I didn't, I wanna talk out loud, but it would, it would give the administrator some, some leeway, there's a range there, so, um, just like what he said, we had, if we had any threat whatsoever, you were handcuffed and you had to, it was three days out-of-school suspension. So, we had a couple of those, and we kinda talked through it, and, and so we said, well, you propose and propose a change. So, we, we separated it from the physical qualification, a verbal first, then physical, and then, you know, severe threat. You know, as you're, as you're a young boy, you might say something, and as you get older, you say something a little bit more strongly, and that's, you would be addressed as such. But there's some, uh, there's a range there, um, instead of it just being cut and dried, um, three days out of school. So, yes, it, it would give you some leeway, and it would give the administrators some, you know, you'd have the liberty to make those decisions.
Is there a motion to approve this revision?
A second.
All right. Motion made in second. Any other questions, uh, Dr. Hall or Junior? There's no other questions? All those in favor of approving this revision, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any disappre-? Uh, a couple of reports, uh, we have to do annual, uh, and our, reflect in our minutes. Uh, first is the TESA accountability report, um, and we have had that out for public comment, and that's time to approve if, uh, if, uh, Mr. Gil, you wanna go and talk about it.
Again, just like what Shane has shared, this is the third year we've had to do this since we've been, have been introduced to the TESA model for our revenue from the state. This is part of the requirements that we have to show the state and the community how we're purposing our dollars beyond just the salaries and the benefits of our staff, but how we're purposing our dollars to address two, uh, goals for academic improvement. One of those goals do have to include at least seven percent of students reading proficient at third grade by the year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, which has been the standard rule that's, it's outlined in the state law. Ours is seventy point one, when you look at it when we started three years ago, and making that incremental increase to be able to reach that twenty-seven, twenty-year goal of seventy plus, it's seventy point one. We also included as the other goal being forty percent of improvement, uh, forty percent proficient for Algebra One. Given those two goals, uh, again, we had to publicize this for the public comments, as was shared there, you see a spreadsheet, um, of the, uh, of the responses that we have, pro and con to this, majority of the pros to support this. There were a few, uh, naysayers, uh, but the majority of the thirty-four were in favor. Again, the first goal has to be there anyway, everybody in the, in the state has to have at least that first goal. But second and subsequent goals can be left up to the district to decide. But this has been the same goal structure that we've had for these three years. Uh, but again, we've had it for public comment, pending board approval to include this, acceptance of the data that we've had, um, then it will be uploaded in ePlan. It's gotta be uploaded by, I think, the person living.
Is there a motion to accept the TESA accountability report?
A second.
All right, made in second. Any discussion? All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it is approved. And then we also have a, um, approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six LEA compliance report. It's where our district's required to show that we comply with all the federal state education laws, state board of education rules, it's just another annual report that we have to show that we improve.
You said three words.
Uh, so, is there a motion to approve the compliance report for twenty-five, twenty-six? Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is approved as well. Uh, that's the last, uh, action item. Uh, we do, of course, take a minute at the end of the meeting for, while Mr. Gil could reflect on any updates, and then any questions the board may have, uh, it'll be a time to ask if we'll start with a new update.
Well, and they're limited to just a food service update, a maintenance update, and then I did include professional development update, um, so if you have any questions with any of the content that's been shared there, I'd be glad to respond to it.
Any questions from the board at all, or any updates on any of those or anything else?
It appears that the, uh, the lunches are, are being, uh, more, more ready, I guess.
And, and the comments been made, of course, if you remember from last year, uh, the high school particularly had a second chance breakfast that came after first-period block. That's still being well-received. They also shared that for the late starts on the Thursdays, that they've had, they've had more participation eating lunch, because it pushes the lunch shift a little bit later in the morning. But, yeah, it looks like they're, and again, following last year's expectations the board placed on the food service is raising the quality of the choices being made. Still having to address, though, the federal guidelines. If you remember from the, the last month or the month before, she gave the criteria of, you know, by a certain year, we gotta have X number of grams of, you know, salt. All the condiments, all the things that makes the food very flavorful are gonna have to be restricted. Plus, you know, the opportunity to have, uh, you've gotta serve whole grains and not just the more enriched wheat or enriched flour versions, the wonderful rolls that we all like to eat once or twice.
And are you saying that extra money that we then use?
Correct.
For, for everyone to approve?
To approve, yes, ma'am. And, and also for, I believe it's for East Chester, specifically where we are, Stephanie shared that they're having larger portions of, like, salads. There's having, which understandable things that are for a K through three child, the portions are gonna be maybe smaller than what an adult would, would appreciate. So, there's adult portions that are being separated from the kids' portions.
So, we're seeing less wasteful food?
I didn't ask that question. I mean, like, for the morning breakfasts, I know that they're all free for everybody, regardless of whether they qualify for free reduced or, um, but there's also a shared table that's, you know, for any food item, any drink item, that they don't wanna participate, rather than just throwing it in the garbage immediately. There's always a shared table that if anybody else needs, like, an additional meal or juice, or maybe some piece of fruit or some other item, uh, that's, you know, not been bought out of, it's available.
Anything else that's kept for the board? If not, uh, thanks, Miss Grassfield, or Dr. Chris. Absolutely. Thank you for your hospitality, Rob, for being here tonight. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, November eighteenth, it'll be at Chester County High School, then five tomorrow.
And I, I had a conversation with our, our co- our local, uh, House Representative, Kurt Hasty. Asked him if he would be present at that meeting. He said that he could, but he would have to leave by five o'clock. So, my question, would there be interest of the board to have him come, say, at four-thirty and make a short presentation of the upcoming legislative, uh, agendas that he's gonna plan for? If so, we would denounce it for a third, four-thirty, just for him to have an opening opportunity just to address the board?
Is he in question at four-thirty?
Make the meeting at four-thirty, just to say.
Four-thirty, okay, with everybody? Yeah, that's, because we have plenty of time to get that out to the public, so. So, the meeting will be four-thirty at, uh, Chester County High School on the eighteenth. That's the end of our agenda, so just be, just, thank you all.